We have a rambunctious crowd tonight.
Good evening, everyone. We'd like to go ahead and welcome you to the Fruta City Council Meeting. So the time is now 7:00 PM and we're going to go ahead and call our meeting to order. Deb, would you please call roll?
Counsel Bremen.
Here.
Counsel Perser.
Here.
Counsel Williams. Counsel Cry.
Here.
Counsel Miller. Counsel Hansi.
Here.
All right, we're going to move into our moment of silence and pledge of allegiance. If you'd please stand with us. We'd like to take the opportunity to allow all faith and beliefs the opportunity for a silent prayer. Thank you. If you'd please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we've got an agenda before us. Are there any changes to that agenda?
There are changes to the agenda, Mr. Mayor. We've got two additions and one correction. First, I'd like to add the minutes of the November 21st, 2023 regular city council meeting to the consent agenda. For the record, these were emailed to the council for review yesterday. Secondly, I'd like to add the acknowledgement of newly appointed or reappointed boards and commissions members after the consent agenda and before public hearings. And thirdly, there was a correction to consent agenda item 6D for the Geode Flats PUD rezone first reading of ordinance 2024-07. The second reading of the ordinance is scheduled for a public hearing on March 5th and not February 20th.
All right, thank you. With that, do we have a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda as amended, or the agenda, sorry, the agenda as amended, sorry.
All right, we've got a first and a second. Any other questions or comments? All right, hearing none. Deb, please poll council.
Counsel Bremen.
Yes.
Counsel Perser. Counsel Williams.
Yes.
Counsel Cry.
Aye.
Counsel Miller. Counsel Hansi.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
All right, with that, we're going to move into our proclamations and presentations. And tonight, we have two presentations. So the first one is Fruta Teachers and Students of the Month for February, and it's for the Fruta Middle School. So we're going to come down out front because we've got some awards here. All right, I've asked Amy to help me out tonight. So this is one of the privileges we get to do. Partnerships that the city has with D-51 is just an honor for us to be able to acknowledge our students and teachers out here that work in Fruta and that actually impact our community greatly. And so we've got a certificate and each school does it a little differently. So we're normally asking the principal, like, how they want to do their nominations. And so we've got certificates for each grade and then one teacher. And so we've got a rec center pass for each one of these people that are coming up here. And then we've got a I Heart Fruta button for them. So when I call your name, we'd like you to come on up to the front. Then we'd like you to stay up here because I'm sure there's parents in the room that would like to take some photos of this event. So when I call your name, come on up. So we've got for seventh grade, we've got Kenzie Ipsen. Sixth grade Emerson Shane Man.
Shane Man, all right.
Seventh grade teacher, we've got Marie Karas. For sixth grade teacher, we've got Laura Anderson. Elective teacher, we've got Derek Hirschman. Special education teacher, Allison Veal. All right. Well, Allison, don't go too, you gotta get your, don't forget that. Let's give them all a big round of applause. Don't, don't be shy. You guys can come up and take photos. We'll have council, come on. All right, one more round of applause.
Thank you.
That part of getting the award is they have to stay for the whole council meeting. Just as long as you take Dawn with you, we're okay.
All right, there's plenty of room up front now for everybody if. All right, I think they're mostly gone. So we'll get into our next item, which is a presentation for the 2023 Adopt a Trail Program through Family Health West. And so we appreciate our local community, local businesses getting involved and actually keeping Fruta clean and just making it the place that it is. So I've got several things here. So we've got, again, a day pass, and then we've got a Fruta sticker for this, this group. So when I call your name, come on up and we're going to ask you to stay up here for photo opportunities again. Maybe not as many cameras for this one, we'll see. So the first one's Diane Dill. All right. Are you going to accept all the ones that aren't? No. All right. They didn't have to, she doesn't have to know that there's a sticker and a day pass. So Kara Griffith. Lila Stone.
Lila?
Lori Randall, which I don't see, so. Oh, Mickey Randall, yep. All right. You just have to carry all that extra weight of paper. Stuart Shamo Vitz. Anna Reed. Annette Di Benedetto? Di Benedetto, all right. All right, so you, whenever you guys slide down, because I think council wants to get in this photo, too. Thank you, guys, for cleaning up our trails. Wait, there's only two cameras to look at, so. All right, another round of applause. Oh, same opportunity. Now you guys have the opportunity, if you want to leave or sit through the whole meeting.
It's the most exercise I've had all day.
Wish.
All, all right. With that, we're going to move into our next section, which is public participation. So this section is set aside for the city council to listen to comments by the public regarding items that otherwise do not appear on the agenda. So is there anybody in the audience that'd like to speak on something that's not on the agenda? All right, hearing none, we're going to close public participation and move into our consent agenda. So these are items where all conditions or requirements have been agreed to or met prior to the time they come before council for final action. They'll all be voted on with one motion. So with that, and I'm also going to re-mention again, as was in the agenda change, that item D, which is the second reading, is going to be on March 5th for, that's the first reading for the 614 Raptor Road and the PUD development zone. So is there anybody in the audience that'd like to speak on this item? All right, hearing none, we're going to close public participation and bring it back to council. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Do we have a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as the force.
Second.
All right, we have a first and a second. Any other questions or comments? All right, hearing none. Deb, would you please poll council?
Counsel Perser. Counsel Williams.
Yes.
Counsel Cry.
Aye.
Counsel Miller.
Affirmative.
Counsel Hansi.
Yes.
And Counsel Bremen.
Yeah.
Motion passes six zero.
All right, and with that, we'd like to, we did have one reappointment on our Historic Preservation Board for Yvonne Peterson, which I don't see here tonight. But we just wanted to thank her for reapplying to that board. Our boards and commissions are a great asset to us as council, as they give us a lot of insight and feedback in our community. So we just wanted to acknowledge that we had that renewal. With that, we're going to move into our public hearings. And so we've got two quasi judicial and one legislative hearing. So our first one is a special event liquor permit application, and we've got our deputy, deputy city clerk Deb Woods here to present.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good to be with you, city council. I am presenting the Fruta Arts and Culture Board's application for a special event liquor permit for their Coco Vino event to be held on Friday, March 15th from 3:00 to 10:00 PM at Our Lady of Perpetual Emotion at 503 East Aspen Avenue. The Arts and Culture Board has requested to be able to serve wine at their fundraising event, Coco Vino, the proceeds of which will benefit the board and its projects. The proposed license premises consists of the area on the main floor only. IDs will be checked upon entry into the event, and it is an adult-only event, and participants will be limited to two glasses of wine each. Event volunteers will monitor the front door as well as an additional emergency exit located at the rear of the building to ensure that no alcohol enters or leaves the area. Patrons will be monitored for signs of becoming noticeably intoxicated. Signage will be posted at the Aspen Street and Alley entrance and exit that no alcohol may be taken outside of the building. Fruta Chief of Police Dave Kraus reviewed the Arts and Culture Board's application and issued a statement that there is nothing that would prohibit the issuance of the license being requested. Therefore, it is staff's recommendation that the city council approve the application for the special event liquor permit subject to the following conditions. The applicant will discontinue serving alcohol at 9:30 PM to allow patrons 30 minutes to finish their wine and leave the area. All alcohol will be secured and removed by 10:00 PM. No alcohol shall be brought into or out of the licensed premises, and the licensee is solely responsible for control of the licensed premises in regards to alcohol possession, consumption, and adherence to state and local liquor laws. And that concludes my presentation. And Nancy Patterson with the Fruta Arts and Culture Board is present this evening as the applicant's representative. So I will turn it over to Nancy. She has anything to cover that I might have missed. Thank you.
Hello, again. We're back for a second fundraiser, and you know, last year sold out in two weeks, so we're very much looking forward to a second event. We have been able to open up an additional 10 tickets. So because we are open house style, people come and go, and it's, it's very easy then to not overload the facility. We're very familiar with the signage issues and all of that good stuff. Mark Mancuso is working on a link for all of you fine folks. About a week in advance. I will get the details to Janine and those of you that would like to attend. Be able to have a look at tickets prior. General ticket sales, I believe, are coming on the 16th of February. That's our goal, anyway. And again, they sold out in two weeks last year, so a month out is plenty. So we have a little flexibility there. Do you have any questions?
What we'll do is we're going to open up the public comment first, and then we'll come back with questions for you. How's that? All right. So with that, we're going to open up for public comment. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak on this item, now is your opportunity. All right, hearing none, I'm going to close public comment and bring it back to council. Does anybody have questions for Nancy or for Deb on this item?
Thank you.
Yeah, I know, I know last year several of us were wanting to go, and we were a little slow on that.
No idea how popular it would be, and boom, just like that. So we're trying to make some accommodations this year.
So no, we appreciate that very much.
Is this, is this the same weekend that we did last year?
Oh, it's one week later. There was a conflict at.
So fast.
I know, I know.
That's good.
Last year, we had a conflict with a scheduled event at Our Lady, so we bumped it to the 15th this year. It does happen to fall during spring break for some of the schools. I know it's been a little bit of an issue that we were unaware of, and we'll get on it and bring it back to the original date next year if we can. Yeah.
All right, do we have a motion then?
Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
I move to approve the application for a special events permit for the Fruta Arts and Culture Board to serve wine during the Coco fundraiser on Friday, March 15th, 2024, from 3:00 to 10:00 PM at Our Lady of Perpetual Emotion located at 503 East Aspen Avenue, subject, subject to the conditions stated by staff.
All right, we have a first and a second. Any other questions or comments? All right, hearing none. Deb, would you please poll council?
Counsel Williams.
Yes.
Counsel Cry.
Aye.
Counsel Miller. Counsel Hansi.
Yes.
Counsel Bremen.
Yes.
Counsel Perser. Motion passes six zero.
All right, thank you. Looking forward to seeing you there. All right, with that, we're going to move into our second quasi judicial hearing. It's ordinance 2024-06. It's a second reading, and it's an ordinance amending the official zoning map of the city of Fruta by zoning approximately 14.52 acres of property located at 1873 K Road to a community residential zone. And we've got our city planner, Henry Hempel, here to present.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As was stated in the heading for the agenda item, that really is just in a nutshell what this is. To keep it kind of short and sweet, we approved an ordinance, the council approved an ordinance a couple of weeks ago, annexing the subject property. And then, as, as you all know, within 90 days, we're required by law to place it in a zone district, which we're doing tonight. And again, this is a second reading of an ordinance 2024-06. The application itself is zoning approximately 14 and a half acres to community residential. Currently, it's zoned AFT, which is a county zoning designation. And the annexation, again, happened on January 16th. And the planning commission recommended approval of the annexation and the zoning request at their December 12th meeting. Legal notice occurred in November, but it needs to occur before the planning commission's meetings. And so we set those public hearing dates well in advance. And then having a first reading to set a public hearing date for tonight is also another layer of legal notice that we're required to do by law. We put out a legal notice, postcards to a radius of 350 feet around the subject property. We put something on the property to tell the public, passersby, or sir, anything like that of an application, and then we post something in the local newspaper. To give you an idea of the, the location, it's between 18 and a half road and 19 road on K Road or Ottley Avenue, just south of the Brandon Estates subdivision. And then there's an aerial photograph on the right side that shows the subject property. So with zoning applications like this, where an annexation is incidental to it, or a rezone is present, we really refer to the future land use map contained in our comprehensive plan for guidance to not only talk to the public, but also to use in meetings like this and the planning commission. So here's a, a large scale version of our future land use map. The red star shows the, the approximate location of the subject property. And then when we look to the future land use, the residential four to eight dwelling units per acre codified as community residential is a recommended zone. So here's a zoomed in look at that location. That dark line is the city limits, or was the city limits at the time. The future land use map was presented and adopted, and then that yellow represents the residential four to eight dwelling units per acre, or like I mentioned, community residential. When we look at the review criteria to make a recommendation to planning commission and the city council, we look at chapter nine in our land use code. There's five criteria to consider. The zoning compatibility with surrounding land uses, does it make sense for this area? Is it consistent with the master plan? I've touched on that. And it was part of an annexation application. And just for the public certification, the CR zone or community residential zone allows a density of up to six to eight dwelling units per acre through our land use code. Review comments and public comments, no reviewer expressed any concerns with this. We are the primary review agency for zoning applications. And then public comments, no written public comments were received, and there was no public comment received at the planning commission meeting. And with that, the suggested motion is the staff's recommendation, and this is on page 82 of the city council packet. And I'm not going to read it word for word. We do recommend approval of the community residential zone for this application, and that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Henry. All right, with that, we're going to open this up to public comment. If there's anybody in the audience that'd like to speak on this item, now is your opportunity. All right, hearing none, we're going to close public comment and bring you back to council. Does anybody have any questions or comments on this item? All right, hearing none, do we have a motion?
Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance 2024-06, amending the official zone, the official zoning map of the, of the city of Fruta by zoning approximately 14.52 acres of property located at 1873 K Road to a community residential zone.
All right, we have a first and a second. Any other questions or comments? All right, hearing none. Deb, would you please poll council?
Counsel Cry.
Aye.
Counsel Miller.
Yes.
Counsel Hansi.
Yes.
Counsel Bremen.
Yeah.
Counsel Perser. And Counsel Williams.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
All right, with that, we're going to move into our legislative hearing. It's resolution 2024-03, and it's a, a request to approve an amendment to the 2024 annual budget. We've got Shannon Vossen here, our assistant city manager, to present.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, for the opportunity to present this agenda item tonight. Resolution 2024-03 is a supplemental appropriation of funds in the Fruta Community Center and the Capital Front and the Capital Projects Fund for three projects that were originally included in the 2023 budget but not completed for various reasons, but going to be completed this year. So we need to reappropriate funds that were approved in 2023 to 2024. Two projects in the community center fund, we have the first one is the locker room tile replacement project. We budgeted that at $800,000 in 2023. When we went through purchasing, we did a formal RFP. That bid came back at $88,000. We did have some expenses this past year, but those were mostly limited to just actually ordering the tile. Now they're actually onsite at the community center and doing one locker room at a time. Then also we'll do the rest after both locker rooms. So this appropriates funds for that project, $70,000 after 2023 expenses. The water slide construction will start soon, so this appropriates $850,000 that, again, was in the 2023 budget for the water slide. We did have some design work that we paid for last year just to help with that project to get it construction shovel ready. So since that is more than what was initially budgeted, we are going to cut out some of those smaller projects in the community center this year, so we will have enough to cover the difference as long as we have $850,000 for the construction. And finally, in our, in our capital projects fund, in this year's budget, we have the design of the Maple Street Bridge. We budgeted $225 for the design, which we are under contract with SGM for that, but we do need additional $25,000 for surveying, stuff like that as part of the design to get that shovel ready and ready for construction in the near future. That one, we will be reimbursed through Mesa County. They have offered $750,000, up to $750,000 for this project. And also, this project has been recommended for congressional directed spending in the amount of $1.75 million. So getting the surveying done will help us get started on that, hopefully wrap up that design by the end of the year and construct next year. Always happy to take any questions if you have any, but I will stop there and let you open up to public comment. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Shannon. All right, with that, we're going to open this item up to public comment. Is there anybody in the audience that'd like to speak on this item? All right, hearing none, we're going to close public comment and bring it back to council. Does anybody have any questions on this item?
Can you re, oh, you go ahead.
No, go ahead, go first.
Can you refresh our memory on the slide that there were some funds that we received that's going towards this kind of project? Like, this may to the public seem like quite inexpensive.
Sure, yeah. Yeah, so we do have funds that are, we do have funds that are restricted for building improvements specifically for the community center, and we try to restrict at least a million dollars per year just for improvements and enhancements. So this was originally part of the community center design back before it was built, but you know, to cut down on costs at the time, they kind of omitted the slide with the hope that we do in the future. Now that we have a very good amount of fund balance for the community center, we're using those building improvement funds for the water slide. So it's going to be a great amenity. It's going to go out the building. That's going to have its own kind of landing area where the pool is, kind of by the lap lanes right there. So I think it's going to be a great addition to the community center. Now.
Aaron. Do you think we're going to be fine on that budget for $850? It's a lot of money, and, and I, we've had prior conversations with plumbing and such not being to plant the plans that we had, so we had some surprises. So are we good there?
Yeah, I certainly hope so. So I think that was, we spent $15,000 on some additional design that was needed to kind of get it construction ready. And I think that identified what those true costs would be, and yeah, roughly around $850. Oh, things could always come up. But I think our Parks and Rec Department feels confident in that. We are also under contract for the construction, the equipment, right at $850. So feel pretty good, but as you know, things can always come up at some point, especially when you're dealing with, you know, building improvements and whatnot.
And the tile work looks good. I was there the other day.
Awesome.
The, the boys bathroom looks great.
Awesome.
And then Maple Street, that's right now docketed for 2025 construction.
It is, yeah. So a couple of factors with that, since we are getting federal funding, both sources, the Mesa County funding and the congressional directed spending, assuming that the appropriation goes well, are federally funded, so we have different requirements we have to meet, Davis Bacon Wages, you know, Buy in America, et cetera. So we are updating the design to meet all those qualifications we have to meet for those federal requirements. But yeah, the goal would be wrap that up this year, get the surveying done, construct next year. A lot with that federal funding, too, sometimes it takes a while. So we've talked to, you know, some other agencies. They, it actually took them a year to actually get kind of the dollars in hand. So 2025 seems like a good time for that. For the bridge, yeah.
Does, does this bridge carry the same amount of stuff as the Pine Street Bridge did? Like, are we going to have to plan that similarly to the, to the replacement?
There are some similarities. If, if it, if construction is able to start next year, that would be in the fall again. But we would be, there, there are some things that we could avoid from the Pine Street Bridge project going into this one at a time.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Shannon, one other question. So in $850 for the slide, does that have a contingency in that as well?
Um, you know.
Fruta contingency fund? I mean, I know on normal construction.
Yeah, we generally try to reserve at least 10% for some of these construction projects for contingency. Now, the Fruta Community Center is unique that it has its own contingency that we budget for each year. So if things were to go over, if maybe we were saying that things were going to go over, we could always go back to council for those contingency funds. But again, after the design work, getting kind of the construction drawings in hand, I think our Parks Department feels like that's going to be pretty close. If we do have to go to contingency funds, you know, that's always an option for that, or any other unexpected or unforeseen expenses that may come up throughout the year. But that's already pre-budgeted, does not require supplemental appropriation, just an approval from council. And the design work got into the detail of.
And the design work got into the detail of because it was engineered out of the original project, but that project was so many years ago. There, when we went back to the original contractor, there were, you know, it's one thing to say we're not doing this part of the project, but we didn't know how far that went in. So what infrastructure was under, you know, under the flooring and what kind of, you know, how far did they get? So we were going back, so we had to probe and make sure we knew exactly what all needs to go into the project. You know, that it wasn't just the slide itself, but some of the internal functions for that slide to actually perform. And then we, one of the, right now, we're working with, we're under contract and we're nailing down the timeline for that because we're also trying to coordinate two other replacement projects that are separate from the slide that would, that could be done at the same time when you have some of the closure pieces. It won't be a long, you know, it'll be intermittent closures, but we're going to be in the same mechanical room dealing with some of the same infrastructure that we're replacing, we're replacing a heater and, and things like that. So, so they're doing a lot ahead of time to try and make that as smooth as possible. And the contractors working with subcontractors, so there's been a number of things lining up to make sure, okay, we can get this price right to start it, you know, immediately and get through it this year.
All right, any other questions? All right, do we have a motion?
Mayor, I am moved to adopt resolution twenty twenty-four oh three amending the twenty twenty-four budget to appropriate funds in the community center fund and the capital projects fund for completion of capital projects originally included in the twenty twenty-three annual budget and approve a supplemental appropriation of funds for the Maple Street Bridge project.
Second.
All right, we've got a first and a second. Any other questions or comments? All right, hearing none, Deb, would you please poll council?
Councillor Miller?
Yes.
Councillor Hansi?
Yes.
Councillor Breaman?
Aye.
Councillor Perser?
Yes.
Councillor Williams?
Yes.
And Councillor Cry?
Aye.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you.
All right, with that, we're going to move into our administrative agenda. So we've got our public safety update. We've got our chief of police, Dave Kraus, here to present. Hundred and two slides, what?
He's a man of many words.
Mayor and council, thank you for the opportunity to present tonight. Dave Kraus, chief police. As has become customary the last few years, about annually, sometimes a little more often, I have a presentation on just some brief highlights of topical items surrounding public safety that I thought may be of interest to council. It's just a brief snapshot, so I wanted to leave ample time for any questions or conversation from council you'd like to have about topics of interest that maybe I didn't cover. A, a brief review about twenty twenty-three, we took the opportunity, we, we started at the end of twenty twenty-two, but really firmly took hold in twenty twenty-three of a new tracking system to capture really more accurately how officers are spending their time specifically in relation to officer initiated activities, not just calls for service generated by the public. As you've probably seen in some of the weekly updates, this has resulted in an overall report of increase in calls for service for the police department. However, I can confidently say that the majority of that increase is due to this new tracking system and the more accurate capturing of self-initiated activities by the officers. Just a quick look at the past three years, as you can see, in, in twenty twenty-one, our overall calls for service were eight thousand four hundred and seventy-eight. In twenty twenty-two, we increased by three percent to just over eighty-six hundred. And then for twenty twenty-three, our total calls for service, highest we've ever experienced at eleven thousand two hundred and thirty-four, showing a twenty-nine percent increase in calls for service over twenty twenty-two. Again, that, as Mark Twain said, I think there's lies and statistics, and I think statistics can be misleading, but I think we have a good explanation here of what, what accounts for that rather large increase. I know last year, the council had a question regarding some of the top calls for service that we get in a year. So this year, I came prepared more so than last year. And so I've, in, in David Letterman's style, have prepared the top ten calls for service in twenty twenty-three. And coming in at number ten are civil issues at a hundred and ninety-three, and that can range from anything from a simple civil question that someone from the public may have or a landlord tenant dispute, those sorts of things. At number nine, we have our community engagement activities at two hundred and thirty-eight. We, in addition to creating the new system of capturing officer initiated activities, we also worked with Grand Junction of Mesa County with whom we share a records management system and dispatch system to create a new call type of community engagement so that we could actually more accurately track those specific activities. Number eight is our VIN inspections at two hundred and fifty-six. For those who are not aware, VIN is a vehicle identification number. And when individuals buy a car from out of state, for example, they have to have the VIN verified before they can get plates at DMV. So we conducted two hundred and fifty-six of those inspections. At number seven, our welfare checks, simply requests for us to check on individuals' welfare for various reasons. Number six, suspicious activities, could be anything from suspicious persons to suspicious vehicles, suspicious circumstances like a car door, garage door left open that is called in. At number five, we received five hundred and nine animal calls of one kind or another, could be loose animals, dog bites, that sort of thing.
Yeah, those were max.
I'll reserve comment on that. We received five hundred and thirty-six requests for assistance. Again, that's a pretty broad area that captures a lot of different requests, but some kind of an assist to the public. Number three, eight hundred and sixty-seven follow-up investigations of one kind or another. And our top two, we had one thousand thirty-six traffic stops in two thousand and twenty-three. And our number one captured call for service was our checks at three thousand seven hundred and thirteen. And checks includes targeted patrols in neighborhoods, business checks, school checks. Again, a pretty broad area, but I think what's notable about this list is for certain, the top one and two calls for service are officer initiated activities. I think it paints a pretty good picture that even when we're not receiving a lot of calls for service from the public, the officers are staying busy and really are proactive in their approach to policing. Because community engagement has been a, a real focus for us the past few years, I thought I'd just give you a, a quick, certainly not inclusive, but brief list about some of the activities we participated in. In twenty twenty-three, we had a national night out event in August. We had our cops and cars show with a number of our community partners. And at a very successful fundraising event for Special Olympics of Colorado. We hosted several coffee with a cop events, participated in the Fruit Academy, CR stood up this year or this past year. A number of different types of neighborhood presentations. We participated in two shop with a cop events with our other local law enforcement partners. And as you can see with some of the pictures, just an overall good time, some dance stars at last year's Fruit of Monument prom, and then our resident pickleball expert there that spends, he tries very hard to at least once a week go play pickleball. Taking a quick look into twenty twenty-four, as far as our staffing goes, we have one current vacancy. We're hoping to have that filled within the next couple of weeks. We have a very viable, good candidate to fill our one vacancy that's been, that has existed for quite some time. We plan to have continued focus and expansion on our outreach and engagement activities. Filling that vacancy and retaining all of our current police officers will help us with that expansion by filling the community engagement position that we've left vacant for the purpose of maintaining our ability to cover the patrol schedule and answer calls for service. So once we're fully staffed, we believe we can build that community engagement position and then have a dedicated focused person to really coordinate those, those activities. It certainly won't mean that the other officers won't engage in those activities, but this position will allow someone to have more free time to just be more of a coordinator and, and really dedicated to those, those sorts of things. And then we know we need to continue to monitor traffic issues. It, it did not rise to the top of one of our most common calls for service as far as traffic complaints or traffic concerns. However, we know that with our growth and additional visitors to the city, which are all good things, more people and more cars on the roadway leads to more traffic issues, and those are certainly an issue that can create some safety concerns. So we'll continue to monitor our efforts there. Our continuing challenges are nothing new. Like every other agency in the state and, and even nationally, we still continue to struggle with recruitment and retention. But as it sits now, as I mentioned in the last slide, we're going into twenty twenty-four in a really good spot and hope to retain that. Social issues are always a challenge for us, a lot of the things that fall into the police realm that really are not, they're, they're social issues, they're community issues, they're not necessarily law enforcement issues. So they can be some of the more challenging events to deal with. So we rely heavily on our partners. The sheriff's office has been very generous with their, their co-responder program that teams a deputy with a mental health clinician. And they have helped us numerous times on this end of the valley with some of the more challenging calls. And so that, that partnership is, is strong and healthy. The, the houselessness issues, it's no, no secret that some of our, our neighbors have been struggling publicly with some of the houseless issues in their communities. And so we're monitoring that. We work very closely and meet regularly with all of our local partners as well as our federal partners to discuss community issues. And certainly this is one that comes regularly and that we are being a, a, a close, a close ear to the rails on. And then, of course, just continuing to balance calls for service, any staffing challenges that eventually come up, as much as we'd like to retain a hundred percent of our staff forever, that's not realistic. So we know we're going to have staffing issues at some point, so just balancing those. The reporting requirements, the state has instituted for us, continues to be time consuming. And then also the technology, keeping up with technology, I think, not only in the public safety realm, but certainly in the general area of life, I think technology, it seems like there's new technology every day that makes it difficult to keep up with. And so we continue to monitor that. And then also keeping up with our training requirements, not only the mandatory training required through the state agencies and legislation, but also just training that we know we need to maintain proficiency on that in order to have operational effectiveness. To round out, I think, thought what I'd really like to do is just share some of the things that I'm proud of. These are some comments that we received throughout the year from community members or visitors. And I know I don't need to read you, but just for the record, I thought I'd, I'd try to read some of these so that they're captured. First one, this person wrote in saying that they were pulled over. And, sorry, I've got things in the way. Mentioned that the officer could tell that she was nervous and just wanted to comment how patient and kind that he was. She went on to say that although she hasn't had a lot of interaction with law enforcement, this was the best interaction that she'd ever had and thought it should be recognized. I received an email from an individual who was visiting Fruit of Fall Fest, forty-year veteran of law enforcement, retired, and mentioned that he was walking at Fruit of Fall Fest, tripped and fell, and that the officers in the area, the first aid tent, came to aid immediately. And they were very professional and kind and helpful, and he didn't get their names, but advised I should be proud to have officers like this. Another, someone wrote in to give recognition, recognition to officers taking the time to go to the Discovery Kids Car Wash fundraiser and get their cars washed and offer a small donation for that. They said it's a small selfless acts like these that keep the dreams and excitement alive in our kids, and these are the memories of community support that encourage and breed successful leaders. This individual wrote in thanking an officer for his kindness, compassion and prompt response to the dog getting attacked and mentioned that the officers handled the situation with sincere care. They appreciated the time in making the situation less stressful and serving the community. And they brought a, a card, a nice card and some snacks for the officers. And finally, this officer, this individual wrote in about an officer being a great resource to the youth of our community. Mentioned that their granddaughter had much anxiety about her first year at the eight-nine school. The officer visited with the granddaughter and even took her to the eight-nine school and introduced her to the staff. The officer reassured the granddaughter that it was going to be okay and that she would enjoy attending the eight-nine school. And says, my granddaughter is now much more relaxed and excited about starting her first year at the eight-nine school. And the officer went above and beyond to spend extra time with the granddaughter and help the family with a stressful situation, and they were grateful. These are comments we get often, and I think we're pretty good about sharing them internally, but we don't often toot our, our horns of our officers publicly. And I just, it was, as our elected officials and knowing that we get so much support from you, to just hear some of these comments that our officers get. I think too, to, to relate it back to the challenges that we experience, all of those things I mentioned certainly are challenges, but I think these comments represent the real challenge is we can't, we, we can't let service that generates these types of comments change. We have to maintain that level of service. And that's really what our, our true focus is when we talk about what's, what's our focus for twenty twenty-four. It boils down to continuing to provide the level of service that is reflected in these types of comments. That is all I have for my presentation. Be more than happy to answer questions or have any conversation about any other issues you'd like to.
Who wants to start?
So that twenty-nine percent year over year, does that show like a twenty-nine percent increase in our crime rate, like?
No, the, the crime statistics are reported separately. So they're actually reported when we do a, a crime case report, we report those statistics through a system called NIBR's National Incident Based Reporting System. And that is captured by the state and federal governments. And so those are, those reflect different numbers for sure than just the calls for service.
And how did, how are those looking?
Generally, very good. I think crime rates have decreased in general in many areas of the state and no exception. So I think also it's all, although the calls for service statistics don't necessarily represent crime rates, I think it's important to point out that there really aren't, wasn't any criminal activity on that top ten list.
Yeah, exactly. That's, I was like, wow, okay, this is, this is great, okay. Is that, can you share this, like, can you share these slides with us?
Yeah, absolutely.
Like email, if Sarah could email it to us, I, I would like that breakdown, that was really interesting to see. And keep up the good work. I always have pleasant interactions. And as have my kiddos, I have teenage drivers who have been pulled over. Yeah. Yes.
Thank you so much for that presentation is really.
Thank you so much for that. Presentation is really great and informative. I am curious to dive in a little bit deeper with the traffic stops. Do you have an idea what the top two of those typically are? And I'm sorry, I know I'm doing this again.
I don't have the statistics. I can certainly get those. Anecdotally, I would say speeding and probably stop sign violations.
Yeah, makes sense to me. And then I just happened to notice a couple of Saturdays in January, the second and third Saturday in around 7:30, 8:30 timeframe, pullovers on Aspen Street, which is so rare that people were stopping and like looking out the windows to see what was happening, which is great that that is a rarity. I was curious though if there's like been a focus area on that particularly.
So, we have several focus areas. We have what's called a STEP program, Strategic Traffic Enforcement Program. So, those can be either generated by public concerns about certain areas in the city, or we can generate those ourselves. For example, we generate them every year for every school zone in the city. And so, we, when we are encouraging traffic enforcement, we encourage the priority is with those step areas because they have been an area of concern for citizens or obviously zones are an important place. So, I would imagine that emphasis on Aspen was due to a complaint and that we created a step area for that.
All right, thank you for that clarity. And we talked about this last year a little bit. And you mentioned that your partners with the State Patrol or have, was it State Patrol, is lending mental? Or the county?
The county, yeah. I may have misspoken, but yeah.
How significant do you think those calls are? Is that something that we should be looking at to actually do in-house for you all at some point?
So, I think the, as far as volume, I don't know that obviously, they don't rise to the top, but complexity and challenge, I think, is certainly there with each of those calls. We definitely are monitoring whether we need in-house resources like that. I think because we have such a good relationship with our partners, we probably don't need it right now. There may well come a time when we do. But I don't know that we would, if you're looking at cost-benefit analysis, I don't know if we're quite there.
Thank you for that. The houselessness, are you seeing an increase here in, well, we know in the valley that is the case. Are we seeing that here?
No, it ebbs and flows every year, but there has not been a market increase. I think the question has come up with some of the changes that our neighbors have made with their policies, if it's influenced our population, and we have not experienced that.
Great, thank you. And then one more question, where do people, how do people get these great comments to you? Like you said, one emailed you, but is there other ways to?
Yeah, we do. We often get them through email. We have a general police email. We get tons of thank you cards and cookies and those sorts of things. So, we get them in all forms, phone calls at times. Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions before I ask mine?
Yes.
Oh, go ahead.
First of all, thank you for managing a great department, helping our community. I think just two items. What are some of the tactics or things that you try to help with when we do have a homeless situation? Because it seems for us being a smaller community, it could become a challenge, but how do you do so well with it? What exactly are you doing?
Well, we certainly, the first thing we would do is offer resources. Well, I take that back. The first thing we would do is address any kind of a public safety issue that exists. Sometimes there is a criminal element to those calls, but oftentimes there isn't. And we always offer resources. Many, well, most of the resources are in other communities. So, that is typically where we try to encourage them to find those resources. So, Catholic Outreach and Homeward Bound and some of those agencies that are specifically geared toward houselessness. So, that's number one. And yeah, just trying to connect with resources and using those avenues.
And I'm glad you guys have a good resource with the sheriffs for the co-responder. I think that's very important to have and continue. Over the last month, we had a couple significant instances in our community, like one was a break-in, which luckily, it sounds like the homeowner was able to protect themselves. And then also, we kind of had a standoff per se, or whatever you want to call it. Do you see that those are just very, very isolated, or do you see them, those type of instances increasing within our community?
I don't think we've seen an increase. We, you know, we get calls like that every so often. Again, thanks to our partners at other agencies, we're able to rely upon some of the resources that they have that we don't have in our department because we simply aren't big enough or don't have the need that they have in their departments. So, no, I wouldn't say that there's any kind of an increase. I think they're they're quite public and very well recognized when they happen because they are large incidents, but I don't think the statistics would support any kind of a market increase.
I have one more follow-up. Based on Aaron's, just with the houseless individuals with the resources, are you also, are you all also equipped to have like handout GVT passes or something like that? Since most of the services are not located here in our community. Is that something, if not, that you would like to be able to do?
Perhaps. I don't know that we've considered it. We give some rides.
Oh, you do, okay.
If people would agree to seek those resources, we're happy to get them where they need to be. But I do know that there are agencies that provide those, the bus passes and whatnot, but we don't currently do that.
I, Nina touched it pretty well, but I did want to kind of piggyback off the co-partners with them. My biggest question always for you every time you come up is, do you have what you need? Do you have the resources? And that was obviously going to be one thing that I wanted to talk about. So, but obviously, that's a pretty important part, so please don't hesitate to come back to us if you see that, you know, that you guys are getting a drain on that. We don't want you to have to rely on them all the time when it is something that we could do in-house. I think that we would all be very quick to jump on board with that. And that being said, how's the coffee machine doing?
Installed today and they make copies. What can we ask?
Anything else? Is there anything else that you guys need at this point in time that you could see coming up that we can help you with?
No, first of all, I appreciate the question, and we know we have great support from council city administration, so that's very appreciated. I think we I think we address those needs pretty well at budget time if we feel like we have them. Of course, I don't know how well you guys know cops, but they always want the newest and best of everything.
Sure, don't we all?
We don't always accommodate that, but we do we do try to provide what they need to do their job and to really serve the community in the best way. So, we've accomplished that through budget requests in the past, and we'll continue to do that as those needs arise.
Well, thanks for everything you guys do. You do a great job. We're always really honored to have you guys in the community. When you send over the stuff to us, go ahead and throw a couple of the mean ones too, just for so we can have a little fun. Right, yeah, the ones you want to share in public.
All right, everybody, can I ask mine? I have two now.
Mayor, will you please ask your question?
So, the first one is, and I'm on the police commission, so I, most of this I know, but we were talking about new police commission members getting tased as part of that. Are we gonna do that same thing with new council members coming in? That would be my first question.
No, it's mayor's going off. That decision depending upon who that was.
All right, and the second one was, and I don't know if you can say anything about it, but I was sitting at Aspen Street Coffee this morning about 9:00 AM, and I saw three cruisers with their lights on down Aspen. So, I was just wondering if there's anything major happening that?
Nothing that rose to the level of me needing to know about it, I guess. I was in a meeting this morning.
I didn't know if the donut shop, new donut shop.
Maybe it was on fire or something.
It's low, Mr. Mayor.
Thinking that, tasing the outgoing mayor, aren't you?
That's all I have, I'm sorry.
Mayor, if I could add, I just want to commend the chief in the department on the proactive, self-initiated calls. I know that although it's a new tracking system and the fact that it's not new that they're doing those, it's been a goal of the departments to increase proactive activity and outreach. And, you know, obviously, it's going to be higher when you start recording it differently, but it's also higher because of the efforts that they're putting in. And we, I mean, we firmly believe that as much as we, the more we can be proactive, the more we can hopefully not have to be as reactive. I mean, there will always be things to react to, but so, super proud of that. And then I have the opportunity to read every officer's employee development assessment each year, which is kind of like their annual review that and one of the things, as the chief mentioned, that they do a great job internally recording the accolades that come in, but maybe we don't share them as much externally. I, every single officer that we have, and we have 20 sworn officers, I believe, right now. Maybe that's filling the one position still, but it is. And we, every single one has multiple comments in that they, that their supervisors have saved from either written and delivered to the department, emailed to the department, maybe even someone called in and shared it, and they recorded it. And they do a great job of keeping track of that, so every officer knows that that's been received, the department knows, and it's reflected in their EDAs. And I think, you know, we here and you here and the chief shares often how supportive the community is, and it really shows through those types of accolades, because it takes a lot to it's easy to call when you have a problem, but, you know, not everybody takes that time to call for the other, for those types of accolades, and we have a lot of people that do. And then I did want to just remind you all that, kind of to Councilmember Williams' question, we did not budget an additional officer in this year's budget because we, it was, it had taken, you know, most of the year, we were trying to fill the one vacancy, which I know that's one of our struggles. It's, we're in a good spot compared to most departments who are looking for 30-plus officers and large percentages of there. And we've got a finalist, you know, as the chief said, to fill that. But I did want to remind you that part of going into this year was if recruitment, because of that nature, if we are successful in recruitment for even one more, we would be coming back to request moving funds to cover that. We just didn't want to move them, you know, when we had a vacancy for such a long period of time. But if all goes well, that could be one additional resource that we're coming back during this this calendar year.
It's nice that we can be diligent and that we're not stressed and that we're not just plugging someone in there just to fill the spot, so thank you for that.
All right, any other questions for Dave?
You're not allowed, you're not allowed to ask anymore.
He'll be waiting out there, hold me over on my way home. That's right. All right, with that, our next item on our administrative agenda is ordinance 2024-08, and it's a first reading. So, it's an introduction of an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Farm LLC for its purchase of city property known as 169 South Mulberry Street. We've got our city attorney, Mary Elizabeth Geiger, here, and special counsel, Kim Crawford, to present, and Kim is remote.
So, good evening, Mayor, City Council. This is a little different. Usually, we have first reading of ordinances on consent agenda, but wanted to pull this off separately. It's not a public hearing, it's still just a first reading. But to give you guys a little bit of background information, you know, we've talked at the workshop on the 23rd about the 169 South Mulberry Project and redevelopment. And so, as you all know from the charter, requires an ordinance to be able to convey property. In the past, we have gone through that ordinance process and at the end executed the contract. In this instance, because of the nature of the development agreement and the potential redevelopment, the buyer needs to be able to go out and get financing for that letter of credit. And so, that's why you have the resolution authorizing Mike to go ahead and sign the contract now so that they can go ahead and look for that financing. Obviously, the closing and conveyance of this is still contingent upon that ordinance passing at second reading, so it does not mean that you're locking, you know, anything in right now. It's also contingent upon the development agreement, you know, coming to a place that you guys are good with and that the buyer's good with, and a couple other contingencies, but this is just to get this actually processed rolling. So, that's all I have on that. If you guys have any questions on those two items.
Anybody have any questions?
I think we covered it pretty good in the workshop.
That workshop was very informative. Okay, so, you know, Dan? Or Mike, do you guys, probably, I guess, do you guys want to hear from Kim first before you consider those two items? They are going to require two different actions. One on the ordinance first reading and then one on the resolution. Okay, so Kim's going to present about the development agreement term.
Hi, I'm Kim Crawford. I'm from Butler Snow. Oh, thank you. Thank you whoever's helping me with my presentation. Thank you. So, we've been working with the city, negotiating the terms of this contract since you started talking with Farm LLC when they expressed interest to purchase the property. So, part of this acquisition is going to include a development agreement. And the development agreement is going to set out all of the terms of the conditions on which, what they have to do, they have to perform in order to purchase this property and redevelop it for the city and for the benefit of the city and the surrounding community. So, next slide, please. So, the objective of a development agreement, we'll go over those, what the key terms are, and you did hear most of those key terms at your meeting a couple weeks ago. Some kind of considerations for council before you decide what you're going to do and if you're going to move forward. And that we've identified a couple risks that are, again, something that you just want to look at and make sure that you have taken into consideration before moving forward. And I also don't have 102 pages, so this is a pretty short presentation. So, next slide, please. So, Mary Elizabeth went over the background a little bit, and I know you did go over this pretty in-depth at your last meeting. But Farm did approach the city to acquire some property that was known as the powder coating building at 169 South Mulberry. Their objective is to really redevelop this property, renovate it, and to provide business and arts to the community and the area. This is in conjunction with the Fruta in Motion Development Plan and working with the community to try to provide some of the benefits that you want to see in your community. They want to redevelop this property, certainly for their own purposes, but as well as that, they're going to provide public parking for the community as well as retail and/or studio space. Their vision, and I think in the city's vision, is to provide a mixed-use redevelopment that brings vibrancy to the downtown core on South Mulberry, again, according to your Fruta in Motion Development Plan. Next slide. So, again, I think what you are aiming for is to redevelop this area to provide some community benefits and amenities that you would like to see in Fruta. And those are shown and discussed in your Fruta in Motion Comprehensive Plan. That plans on your website. The community is aware of the plan. You want to develop You want to develop the area to be pedestrian oriented and more of a commercial area to bring some more retail downtown and more energy and vibrancy to, to that area. You want to build on your downtown as a social and civic hub of the community. You want to make this a place where people come and congregate and get together. You want to make, you remediate or get rid of the blight in the current building and some of the surrounding areas to make it a, a better place for your community, to make it more accessible and a, a better place for your residents and taxpayers. You want to focus on commercial rather than conversion to a ground level or multi-family development. So you're going to bring in more businesses into the community. The intent of this project, again, is to promote and support the arts, outdoor recreation, retail, and just the general vibrancy of the downtown area. According to Farm LLC, their future uses, they are hoping could include restaurants, hospitality and community gathering spaces and areas. Next slide. According to your objectives that are stated in your Fruta in Motion Development Plan is you want to eliminate blight along the Mulberry Corridor. You want to revitalize the non-conforming use of the powder coating building in the downtown area. Spur economic development and revitalize the area, you know, bring, bring in more businesses and more community involvement and bringing more people into the downtown of the community. You want to increase the parking and access to the area for residents and visitors to make it a more parking and pedestrian friendly area that you, you can, community members can stroll around and they can park, they can see a lot of different things in the area, they can shop, they can, they can have coffee, they can walk their dogs, they can do a lot of things that make this a more vibrant area. You'd like to create a thriving downtown with strong local business, inviting lands, inviting streetscapes and events and places that encourage community gatherings and for the ease of access of vehicles, cyclists and pedestrians. And I know the primary goal in speaking with Dan and Mike again is really just to get this parking down there and to get that particular building repurposed and utilized so that it can be a more welcoming area in, in your downtown. Next, please. These are small on the PowerPoint presentation, but these are all, again, terms that the, the staff has gone over and that you went over in your, in your last meeting, talking about what you wanted to get out of a development agreement. We have started working on that agreement, putting things together for, for your, your consideration and for Farm LLC to consider. But really, the main points of this development agreement are the things that you want to see in order for, for the city to, to close on this property. And as Mary Elizabeth said, just by adopting this ordinance and this resolution tonight, you are not saying you are going through with this. It's, it's still subject to a public hearing in, in two weeks or I guess it's early March. So you're going to have some more time to consider it. You're just moving forward at this point, but you, you're not locked into this. Also, in your purchase contract, there are events that can occur for either side in order to get out of this. So these are things that you want to see in the development agreement, and this needs to be signed prior to a closing. The biggest point, I think, of this agreement is the developer or Farm LLC has agreed to obtain a letter of credit that can be drawn upon by the city to complete the improvements. So I think this will, we'll come back to this in the risk section. But I think this is really key to the city in guaranteeing that these developments that you want to see do actually occur. If the developer does not complete these improvements and the development agreement will set out different, I think, just timeframes and benchmarks. If things don't occur when they're supposed to occur, the city will be able to draw on the letter of credit and then you can complete those improvements. You specified the, the things that were most important to you in, in the redevelopment, including the removal of the lean-tos, the additions along the alley, new metal roof on the existing building, replacement of skylights, new garage doors, new exterior lighting and new exterior paint. Another one of the key provisions is parking. That was very important to the city to have more parking downtown. Initially, you're going to get 20 parking spaces, which the buyer is going to lease to the city for a five-year term at no cost to the city. That's kind of included in this whole development agreement. On or before the expiration of this lease term, the buyer is supposed to convey to the city certain property, including 20, 20 parking spaces. Upon conveyance of the parking spaces, the parking shall be improved and maintained, but at the sole expense of the city. So you're going to be responsible for those parking spaces, including paving, lighting and landscaping. While those 20 parking spaces are being constructed, Farm LLC is going to give to the city essentially the right to 24 existing parking spaces that are north of their property and south of East Aspen Avenue. And they're not going to mark that as being private parking. It'll be without signage and it will be available for public parking spaces and public use until those 20 spaces that the city is going to get have been, have been dedicated, permanently dedicated and conveyed to the city. Farm LLC is responsible for, for maintaining the existing 24 parking spaces. The total purchase price is $640,000, which is comprised of a cash contribution and some non-monetary contributions. Thank you. So I, I think, again, when the city is looking at whether they want to, to enter into this contract to purchase or not, you need to determine whether this is really fulfilling the goals of the city under your, your current comprehensive plans, your Fruta and Motion Plan. So is, is this plan of development going to fulfill your needs and going to accomplish your stated goals and objectives? And we will be working with staff and with the city to really figure out and identify what those objectives and goals are and, and make sure that those things are covered in the development plan. Will the remodeling and renovation of the powder coat building meet with the city's objectives to remediate blight and enhance the downtown area? Again, these will be determinations that you will be making in your development plan that, that the, the renovations of this building really is consistent with what you want to be doing and the vision that the city has to redevelop your downtown corridor. You can look at this to see if there's a better use for this property, whether you have any other options or things that you'd like to do with this property. It's my understanding it's been sitting vacant for quite a while. But is there something else or a different vision that you have for the property? Is the city protected in the event that the buyer fails to perform? Again, we'll look at this with the risks, but I think it's something the city needs to consider is whether, you know, what you're giving up and what you're getting in this development agreement. And are there additional risks that have not been identified? Please. So really, when, in, in going over some of these considerations with, essentially with, with Mike and Dan and Mary Elizabeth, that really the biggest risk to the buyer is that the buyer is not able to meet its contractual obligations and it doesn't, and it, or isn't able to perform all of their obligations under the, under the agreement, and they're not able to, to renovate the property. So the buyer backs out. What are the city's options? The purchase options, the purchase contract is going to have several conditions and contingencies that will need to be met before the buyer can withdraw. So, or the buyer can withdraw. So they're going to be doing a number of things like performing, you know, just environmental studies. They have to do some due diligence. If, if any of those things come back negatively, they will be able to withdraw. Similarly, if the buyer doesn't meet certain conditions, the city can withdraw. The risk to the city of that is that you're going to be losing the time. You've already developed, devoted considerable time looking into this project, negotiating, developing different plans and deciding what you wanted out of this. You would lose that time and that, that, that you have dedicated to this so far. However, this city would be able to pursue other options and their offers. Another risk is the buyer is not able to meet its contractual obligations to redevelop. And again, this risk is mitigated again by this letter of credit. The Farm LLC agreeing to provide this letter of credit is really big, I think, for the city because it does allow you, it takes a lot of risk off the city and puts it back on the developer. The fact that they are willing to do this, I think, shows that they're, they're motivated and dedicated to, to performing this, this contract and following through with the redevelopment because the city can draw on this letter of credit so that you can, you as the city can complete the development if you would so choose. On the next slide. Any questions? And, and you'll see the development agreement probably at your next meeting or two.
All right. Does anybody have any questions related to this? Go ahead, Matthew.
I'm just curious about some of the verbiage because it kept saying 20 initial parking spaces. Does that mean there's opportunity for more? Or I just thought it was 20 parking spots.
It is. Remember, though, there's going to be 20 that, that are leased and the final 20 that are permanent might be those leased 20 or might be somewhere else on the property.
So the initial refers to the locate locality of them.
Correct. Yeah.
I was looking at that as possibility for more.
Right. No, I'm sorry. That.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
So I'm so sick of this parking part. You just said that the 20 that are leased, they could come out of the initial, the leased ones? So that's while they're building, the other ones were leasing the 24 that are in front right now. Yeah, that's just what it sounded like you just said.
Oh, no, I'm.
It kind of threw me off. I was like, oh, that's what we don't want.
That is not what's happening.
I have just a comment about the purchase price of the $640,000 in cash and also non-monetary. If for public sake, that could be parceled out to what all the things, you know, obviously the cash part's obvious, but the rest, I think, would be very helpful. We've talked about it and I think we have a good understanding. But in general, for transparency's sake, I'd love to see that kind of line itemed out to how it comes to that amount.
So that would really be part, that really is the development agreement and what the buyer is going to do with regard to redevelopment. So as we're working through finalizing the development agreement, we can see if we can get that precise on dollars per se, but that, you know.
What do you mean for this? Yes.
Right. So that's not something we could do, you know, tonight, right now.
That's fine. Thank you.
And I, I would just add in that, you know, we've already agreed on all the terms with, with our partner for the development agreement. It'll, it's just, it's just putting it into the agreement format with reflecting those terms. And that'll be those two agreements, the parking agreement and the development agreement will be available for you at the second reading. So you're seeing what, what we've, what we're working on because those, those will be signed upon closing, which would then happen after 30 days after the second reading, when the ordinance takes effect. And we had, not right at 30 days, but past 30 days, then we would set a closing date once we get through all the due diligence and everything. So, so you would be able to see at the next.
Additional questions?
I do. How much are we looking at for that letter of credit? What's the dollar, dollar amount?
Roughly $240,000.
Which is the detailed piece that we've had in previous drafts of the work that would be done to the building? What that estimates, what, what those estimates come out to be so that, because that's what the line of credit is for. If they do not perform on redeveloping the, the building, then we would be able to draw it and do that.
So just to, to add some commentary. So we bought this property to look at additional parking for our community. Was it just at that point after we had purchased it, that Farm just happened to come look, come talk to us and ask about the potential to have this partnership?
That's correct because they currently do have, I believe, the adjacent property. And so, you know, this was kind of, since they already were in the area, something they were interested in, then seeing if the city was interested in developing it beyond just parking.
And so the, the value that we're going to, by having this contract and, and sale, what we're really going to be getting out of this is clean-up property, 20 parking spots and additional opportunities for businesses to come into our community. That's the real value that we're getting out of.
Right. Right.
Out of doing this between a cash and non-cash purchase.
Correct.
And then I just want to reiterate, there is going to be another second reading, which is for statutes and then that there'll be further public comment if there's ever needed or if anybody does want to come forward.
That's right. The, you will have, this is an ordinance. It has to be done by ordinance. And so what you're doing tonight are, you're taking two separate actions. First is considering on first reading, the ordinance setting it for hearing, public hearing. Be on March 5th, so the public would have the opportunity. That will be a quasi judicial hearing. The second action item tonight is to adopt the resolution 20, 2024-4, authorizing the city manager to go ahead and execute this contract with Farms. That Farm can start, you know, looking for the financing for that letter of credit, whatever additional funds they may need for the project.
Thank you.
That's all I have there. All right. Does anybody else have any questions or comments? All right, because we're going to have two motions then. So does anybody want to make a motion?
First motion's on the ordinance first reading.
2024-08.
Mr. Mayor, I move, we publish a synopsis of ordinance 2024-8, an ordinance authorizing the city manager execute a contract with Farm LLC for its purchase. City property known as 169 South Mulberry Street, Fruta, Colorado, and to execute all documents to perfect the sale and conveyance of the same for publication of public hearing on March 5th, 2024.
All right. We've got a first and a second. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. Would you please poll council?
Counselor Hancy?
Yes.
Counselor Bremen?
Yes.
Counselor Perser? Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Counselor Cry?
I am.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Passes six zero.
Second motion?
I move to adopt resolution 2024-04, resolution of the city council to the city of Fruta, Colorado, authorizing the city manager to execute a contract to buy and sell real estate with Farm LLC for 169 South Mulberry Street.
All right. We've got first and a second. Any other questions or comments?
None.
Hearing none. Would you please poll council?
Counselor Bremen?
Yes.
Counselor Perser? Counselor Williams? Counselor Cry?
Hi.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Hancy? Motion passes six zero.
All right. Well, thanks, everyone, for your work. Thank you for being here, Kim.
Thank you.
All right. With that, we're going to move into our city manager's report.
Mayor, members of council, I don't, I don't have any additional updates tonight.
All right. He'll come back. With that, we're going to move into our council reports and actions. So this one, I thought was going to be on consent agenda, but it's not. But the election commission appointments. So according to our charter, we've got to have a two-person, two people appointed to our election committee. According to changes that have happened in state and all that, there's not really a lot that those two people are going to do unless there's a tie vote with that. And so we've got Emily Larson and Stephen Reichan that we appointed last election that had both agreed to be on the election committee again with that. So we wanted to bring that in front of the council. And I don't know if there's any questions or comments related to that one.
So you get to a point, we, you don't need a motion to approve, correct?
We do need an appointment or we need an approval because it's got to be ratified by council. So there is, there will be a motion to ratify that.
But not tonight?
Yes, tonight. Because we need to get it.
That suggested motion at the bottom of the, of the page that, that.
All right. Thank you.
I can put a motion in if, if we have no other questions.
I think Matthew should do it.
All right. Yeah, go ahead.
I move to appoint Emily Larson and Stephen Reich, Reichan to the election commission for a two-year term, February 15th, 2024 through February 15th, 2025.
Second.
All right. We got a first and a second. Any other questions, Matthew?
No.
Thank you, Mr.
No. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Hearing none. Would you please poll council?
Wait.
Wait, wait. I don't know.
That's a one year, but it says two year term.
Oh, good catch.
It should be through 2026.
Is that right? Or should it, or is it a one year?
It's a two year term.
A two year term.
Need to amend the motion.
Yes.
Let me get there, please.
Good catch.
I moved to amend my motion to read a point, I moved to appoint Emily Larson and Stephen Reich into the election commission for a two-year term, February 15th, 2024 through February 15th, 2026.
Second.
All right. Now we have a first and a second. Any other questions or comments? All right. Hearing none. Would you please poll council?
Counselor Perser.
Yes.
Counselor Williams.
Yes.
Counselor Cry.
Hi.
Counselor Miller. Counselor Hansi.
Yes.
And Counselor Bremen.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
All right. With, with that, we're moving to council reports and actions. Ken, did you want to start tonight?
Nothing to report, sir.
All right. Amy?
Um, I attended the state of the state dress today with Shannon. Mike, Mike participated in a roundtable that I was surprised he didn't want to mention to.
I thought Matthew would mention it, so I, I didn't want to spill the thunder there.
I forgot. I forgot you were there. I didn't see you later. Um, but it went really well. I, we got to see the Riverside Education Center. Yes. Um, super cool facility, uh, and really neat program. So, and the address was pretty good. It was a better tone than CML. So. Sounds good.
Yes.
And I missed the historical preservation, uh, meeting today. I am frantically trying to keep up with the flood of buyers that are pouring in right now.
All right. So should we turn the thunder over to Matthew then?
Yes. Matthew, get away.
I got four items on my list. All right. Um, first, it's just James, I, I just want to say thank you because you're always so good about asking the police chief and others, do you have what you need? So just making note and that's greatly appreciated. Um, I do want to bring up looking for fellow council to support, um, a letter. The rural jumpstart program is, uh, up for renewal. It is a program that GJEAP has used, uh, quite a bit to attract companies to the valley. Uh, for those that may not be familiar with it, if you meet certain criteria, which currently are at, you don't have any competition within the state, you bring jobs over the, uh, AMI. Uh, as a company, you're eligible for, the employees do not have to pay, get rebated back their state income tax for a period of four years. You can do a renewal for another four years. There are some sales tax components to that for reimbursement. So that program is, uh, coming to a close. So they're now looking at it to, uh, extend that program. So I would ask the fellow council, uh, be okay if we write a letter of support? But with two different, with two additions to the program as it currently stands. One is by zone, there is a limit to how many employees you can have in that zone. And right now Mesa County is at that limit, which I believe Mike is at 300.
Believe so.
And looking to up that to 500. So it would open up to more companies to come to the area. And the other one is right now that there's not allowed to be any competition within the state, and that's a bit restrictive. And to open that up so that there, uh, can be multiple within the state, if it makes sense. So I'm looking for a thumbs up.
Everybody good with that?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
So is Mike going to draft that?
I was just about to ask Mike if you could, what, it would, put that together would be great.
Yep, will do.
Okay. Uh, second thing I have is, uh, talked to Candace at the Grand Junction Chamber. Pruda has a seat on the air task force, which, um, Grand Junction Air Task Force, which is not the airport board. It is the air task force, which is working to, along with the airport in terms of to increase flights in and out of Grand Junction and to support that effort. And that can be done through, um, pay to play in terms of guaranteeing certain seat capacity. There's multiple, uh, vehicles which that can be used to help incentivize that. We currently do not have anybody on fulfilling that position. It's ex officiado. Um, so I wanted to ask if that is something that we want to talk about now, Mr. Mayor, or wait until after the election, until we kind of do the shuffle?
Are they looking for somebody to fill a spot right now? Or is that something?
A.
Add a board member?
No, there is a seat open now. There has been apparently since the inception. So I, I think it would actually make sense to wait until after the election, because otherwise there's a potential for shifting, but I wanted to get it on the radar of fellow counsel, that I think that is something that we should actively participate in, uh, because of the economic impact it has.
The request is for an actual Pruda city councillor?
Yes. Correct. Somebody on council.
Would say when we do the, when we do the changeover and we do that talk, let's throw that in there.
Again, my first question though for that is, is everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Cause that's our board. So I guess I, what I'd ask is that, Mike, if you add that to our list of boards and commissions, so that way it doesn't, I know Matthew probably won't forget about it, but so it doesn't fall through the cracks when the new council does come on.
And it'd be nice to get any official documents that we need.
I, I'll work with Candace, uh, on that. So.
More influence.
Uh, to.
Meeting, meeting times too.
I, I will go and get additional information. Uh, I believe meetings are on Fridays at 7:30 in the morning, but I will confirm that.
So you, I, you are voluntold. Mr. Brightner Lee.
Early, yes. Bright is questionable. Uh, also the, my last thing is today.
Did you have something to add to that, Mike? Cause you looked like you were going to ask a question.
I, I was just going to say, I receive, I receive all the packets for that and, and the invite to attend. I've attended a few of those meetings when they've requested some feedback from Pruda. Uh, the majority of their focus is how to spend, uh, city of Grand Junction lodging tax funds that goes, and this board makes recommendations on utilizing those funds for, uh, the benefit of the airport. So, um.
Their money. Yeah.
All right, Matthew, back to you.
Uh, and then the last, uh, thing I have on my list is today, uh, Mike and I did, uh, attend the roundtable, which was actually square, uh, with the governor. Um, where it was discussed about the, um, promoting, um, the circular economy, which is a new initiative by the governor, uh, which is, for those that may not know, it's how do you take a product? And then either at the end of the product's life cycle, how do you upstream that and recycle that? Or how do you look at the byproducts of the manufacturing? And how do you use those in other, uh, manufacturing processes? So for instance, there's a company locally that takes plastics, uh, that gets shredded and gets put into concrete molds or either decorative or papers or things like that. Once again, keeping that out of the landfill. There's other examples of working with restaurants in terms of taking the oil from the restaurants. And how do you reuse that in other manufacturing processes? So that was a, the main gist of it. What opportunities are out there in terms of what resources? Uh, Mike did get to speak about some of what we're doing. It was a little bit crappy, um, on that one. Um, once again, it has to.
Elaborate for the public, just.
No, I kind of think. To the subject, Mike, if you want to kind of talk about what you spoke about, because I will not do it justice. I don't want to come in second on this.
Well, we, we all produce waste that we treat at the wastewater reclamation facility and our reclamation facility is, is special. It's unique because it takes, we're, we, we are able to eliminate, um, over a hundred tons of what would be going to the landfill and we turn it into biosolids. It's a EPA class A, uh, fertilizer that can be used in unlimited quantities for, uh, for, let's see, flower beds and, you know, lawn turf, those types of things. We offer it for free to our residents, uh, upon pickup, but we, the majority goes to commercial users that we pay, that pay $20 a yard uh, for it. Um, it's interesting. I mean, this is significant because, uh, another facility, some, or another community similar to us pays about 400,000 in landfill fees a year to, to get rid of their sludge. And we pay zero because we, uh, process it into biosolids. Um, so it, it, it actually is a reuse of a never ending supply.
So what is our revenue from that then? If you're talking about commercial sales?
I, I actually don't know off the top of my head. Um, you know, we do, we go 20, $20 a yard. I'm not going to guess right now. I, I, but we.
This is what Shannon's here for.
Yeah, maybe. He probably knows. Uh, it's not, it's, it's honestly not very much. We give it. We also, you know, for residential, people pick it up for free. Um, I had people that were there today that said they come pick it up and.
Well, that might be a good weekly question to.
Yeah.
In our FAQ. Letter or our Friday.
Weekly update.
Like freezing that.
Yeah.
But you know, it's a great cost avoidance and so for the city as well. So that's all I have, Mr. Mayor and fellow council.
All right. Let's see. I'll, let's go to Janine.
Okay. Um, I went to the final, uh, localism committee meeting and we all will be seeing them here on February 20th to bring forth a recommendation to us. I'm not going to spoil any of that for you all, but um, it's going well. It went well. Um, and then I have all my other, um, I have my other board, um, meeting next week. Um, I do have, uh, oh, and I also went to the candidate orientation that Mike led and it, he did a great job. So I think everyone who actually are, is here right now should feel very oriented. Yeah. It, it, it was, it was good and, and a lot of fun and was reminiscent to and several of us were doing the same thing a couple of years ago. So, um, good stuff. Um, I have a question about, uh, the utility bill, when you sign up to pay online and get it, our city utility bill where you can pay for it. Um, and it just comes out, but we're, but you still get a paper bill. And is there a way to not get that paper bill and just get an email to you instead? And if so, how does one do that?
So that's a great question. We'll look into that.
Okay.
Make sure. I think it's like a bulk process. So we'll just have to, but that's, that's actually a good point.
It just seems, I mean, it's great to be able to pay it online, but if part of that purpose is to not use up so much paper, then.
Right.
So I had that question. Um, I was curious how the new software that we, um, or do we have the new software that is looking into VRBOs and being able, okay, and how is that functioning? And are you finding unpermitted, um, VRBOs and what happens then?
Yeah, uh, it is functioning. It's functioning very well. We are finding, uh, we are, we are making contacts and, uh, you know, letting people know of what they need to do. Um, I don't, I think, Dan, do you want to elaborate on that? Or, or we could provide an update on that at a future meeting as well and just kind of show now that we've, we, we've been utilizing it, uh, uh, for a couple of months now. Uh, I mean, we did some trial, some early training, but so we could, we could bring an update to you on that because it, it is pretty interesting and it's definitely enlightened us on how many and, uh, which, you know, and, and educating those that, that were not, uh, complying.
What are the new software that we acquired with for the?
This, this is a complete, it's like a, it's a, yeah, it's a uni, it's separate from that.
It's separate.
It's a unique, um, that you all gave us direction to go ahead and, and do. And so we're, we're, we are working with it currently and yeah, we'd love to bring an update on that. I think that'd be a good.
What it would be.
Wouldn't be long, but it'd be.
What's on our workshop this month? Do you want to put it on the workshop or do you want?
Pretty full on this month's workshop with the beach. We could do an administrative update, you know, and probably 10 minutes or less on that. So.
Okay. So do you want to put that on for the 20th?
Sure.
Fantastic. Thank you.
There is a lot on the 20th. We'll, we'll double check.
Put it on the first.
But the fifth is, we'll, we'll, we'll get it on either way. It's, it'll be a short update. So.
Thank you so much. That's all I.
All right, Aaron?
Um, three main things. Um, number one, I've had some conversation with staff and I appreciate you guys, uh, looking into the closure of K road between 18 and 19 road. That's going to be a month long. Uh, I think we found a good solution to make sure that, um, there's no surprises and, uh, horrible detours that are worse than, um, other options. So thank you staff for, um, making that happen to be good for the community. Um, museum board. Uh, they do have a candidate, they finished interviewing, I think, two individuals for a new executive director. Uh, the vote so far today for one of the recommendations is good. They're yeses. I think, uh, for enough to hire the individual. Um, so that's really good. And, uh, I think they'll be, I think there's a lot of light at the end of the tunnel to help improve, um, their operations and, and get them back up to beyond the, the good old glory days that they had. Um, and I guess just a reminder, staff, if we've not reached out to him to reach out to him for year end stuff for Margaret.
We have. Yeah.
Perfect. Glad that's working. Oh, and, um, with that, did that last trailer go away?
There's one, there's, well, there's one parked in the back, but there's one left in the parking lot. Um, and I think there's a.
They're waiting someone.
They're waiting a pickup or trying to schedule a pickup for that one right now.
Thanks for staying on top of that. Um, the last thing, just kind of a, a few points. We had a, uh, park board meeting last night. And so there's just a couple of things that I want to bring up, uh, that I think is just good for information. A little more than I'd normally do, but, um, Coddles or Cadell's Canyon, it's kind of that Coddles right off, it's across the street from the, um, the Rimrock Adventures and the, um, the rodeo, yes. Um, so, some, some high school, uh, student came in and wanted to kind of spearhead a little project. And it's not going as much or going the way that I think she's wanting, just because we're dealing with that little like, uh, unofficial parking area, I think has three landowners. Um, and one of them is the BLM and there's a lot of challenges with improving that area. Um, but it sparked a conversation that it might be good if, if, that we could look at asking staff to, um, talk with Sunset Point, uh, development that's going in there. Just some things that we learned from the challenges with Cottle, Cottle?
Coddles.
Cottle? Coddles is like just with, they have some pretty strict guidelines for having, creating trails and, and systems and just curious about how that development can, may or may not be able to do things or not do things that would be good for them and the community and the surrounding area. So I don't know if there's, um, some things that we could have staff look into to just inform the developer of, of, um, what we've learned from this, uh, from our conversations. So I guess is that just a request to ask council if we're good to?
I've tried to wrap my head around what, I guess, what you're asking.
The, the point, so there's some things that we learned from Coddles of what we can and can't do due to different agencies we was working with. And it might be, I think it would be valuable for us to go and inform that developer. So as he's finishing, um, as he's working through his process to develop that property, that it'd be good for him to know the information if there's certain trails that he wants to do, that would be beneficial if he does a certain way to, um, connect with outside trail systems or what like BLM wouldn't like. Just to, I'm.
I have a concern about why is that staff's role to help the develop?
I guess it's in form of, from what we understand, there's, um, BLM, how they evaluate what they will do or not do is based off of, uh, equity or, and it, I think there's some, there's some things within that development plan that may be challenging to, that we think is a good idea, but it won't really function outside of that development when it comes to trail systems.
But what makes you think that that, that the developer wouldn't figure that out on the zone, I guess, is why would we need to get involved?
It's just interesting information that it might be quality to pass on to him.
But I think in the long run, that one, part of that property is going to be donated back to the city.
Yes. And thank, thank you for bringing that part of it, because that's, uh, that's really what I was tr, uh, trying to remember is because if we're going to get that property donated to us at 65 acres or something like that, that it would be good for us to do it. Thank you, Mayor.
I'm just saying that the developers already brought kind of preliminary plan and where they're developing the houses and where that land is.
I'm not saying changing.
For them to do the trails, I'm kind of like, I think that's going to be more on the city, once we get that property back.
I know that, that there's some, some designs there. I, I think the main point is just to make sure that we're all on the same page, so we can, especially when we're receiving that gift from that individual that it's given. Especially when we're receiving that gift from that individual, that it's given to us in a good manner, that we can utilize it the best we can. And not miss out on opportunities because we have information today that might help tomorrow.
I think we already have that information, is that correct, that of where they're going to be developing? Because the preliminary plan is probably not going to change, correct, Mike?
No. Correct, I I I think we'd have to, I'd have to look to see if it's connected, if that trailhead's connected or.
And that's, and that's where some of the things that we were discussing is that there's. That connected from the community, from that property to the outside property, there may or may not be challenges.
Yeah.
That things are done to waste or not, that I think it's just good to make sure that. We make sure we're not wasting any resources or utility of 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 that asset, especially the the part that's going to be donated to us.
Okay, I, okay, I want to get back so we're all clear, because you were asking a question of us, do we want to direct staff to? I I think that was.
Mark has some information that I might think would be valuable for us to make sure that we understand and and whatever's valuable to pass on to him, to say FYI.
Okay, because I'm under the understanding, I mean, I guess my, my opinion, this is my opinion, is. We've got Mark who's in the Parks and Rec Department and he's got staff that would manage that, so. I don't see where we need to make a decision on where that goes, I think that's leaving that up to that professional group to look at it and say.
And that's where I'm in, that's really, it's, I guess it's, I'm looking to encourage us to make sure that we do do that, because there's some opportunities. I think it's more of opportunities to not do certain things, because there, because the challenges of dealing with BLM. Because they have some very rigorous standards.
I I just, I go back to, I'm not sure what we're trying to ask staff to do. Because it's not our responsibility in terms of for the developer, but this is something that we'd have to do internally. So I I don't think they need our direction to do that, I I'm confused.
Yeah, I I just want to make sure that there's, there's information that I learned last night and I'm not remembering all of it, but there's, there's certain challenges that. You can't just have a trail system within that development, go and connect to the outside trail systems. It's not, um, it's not. Allowed or not looked well on to that, um, so just because he builds a trail system into art through that. Land that we're going to be gifted. They, I believe there's some strong opportunities that we, they will not like it, that we link it up to the existing systems.
That the developer will build a trail that stops here with the idea that in theory we could continue the trail. But because of certain rules and regulations, we may not be able to. Okay, so that's the concern.
Yes.
Okay.
It, just want to make sure that we're. Correct, it's. Yeah. And and Mark knows a lot of it, but it was just, that's where I was thinking like. I just want to make sure that we're all on the same board, we all know all the information, especially with that property that we're going to be gifted. Mike, do you have any comments?
I, you know, I I obviously will be talking to Mark, get updates from him on each of the boards and commission items. I, I I just don't know off the top of my head, like the connection, i- if there's, if there's something we can do on the connection piece. But we do have a, we have a really good relationship with the local BLM office and we can, we can make sure that. Uh, John Moyer is in connection with them if there's any of those pieces, so yeah, I I'll, I'll follow up with Mark and. And get some of that information, see whatever we can do to pass on if that's helpful.
Um, Reed Park, they're apparently about a month ahead on groundwork on horizontal, because the weather's been so nice, so. Coming soon, I think the grass is going to be closed for four to six weeks for the electrical work. Um, so the whole park's going to be closed, not just the one section, but it's going to be ready for um. I would assume spring and fall activity, so that was, or spring and summer activity, so that was great to see, and it'll be ready for um. Farmer's market, electricity will be lighted. Yeah, so that's, it's great that things are going really well. Just two last things, um, they're looking, things to get going on the vault down at Snooks, which is great. Um, so we were talking about locations where that's going to go, so we gave a recommendation to. To Mark, um, last thing is um the self-cleaning bathroom. We were talking last night about like location and there's, there's different ideas that are better than others, and so we've suggested a couple. Better locations than others to make sure we have it in a good location, like there's, we had talked about, uh, one of them was somewhere in. The parking lot by next to Kim's Auto, but then that takes up a parking lot or takes up a parking spot, which we don't, I don't think we really want to do. Um, there's been conversations of putting it behind the stage there on the northwest northeast corner of Aspen and Peach. Which I'm not necessarily a fan of, is it's welcome to my bathroom, not welcome to this beautiful landscape, um, I think. Where, I think where we are leaning to uh at, that we are leaning to as, as suggesting to Mark um was. The west side of this building, that it's not necessarily, there's a lot of uh space that's not heavily utilized. Um, but it allows for the bathroom to be, have utilities, be line of sight for like if parents send kids to the bathrooms. They're not crossing roads, not crossing in parking lots, um, so we talked about that as well.
Yeah, it kind of needs to be, I would say, in in this vicinity because of the use of.
Yeah, there's, of course, in this, around the civic center and so, but um another suggestion that would came up was. Where the current trash uh cans are on the north side of the property as well, but that's, and that kids would have to cross. A parking, part of a parking lot, but um, so we had that discussion, so hopefully we can find a good location that makes sense. And keeps other areas uh the beauty that they are today.
But we actually, I I would say we uh, we've been looking at a few locations, both from uh fiber connection. Water connection, electrical connection, um, on the prem, on this site uh for the civic center. And uh the, the thought of on the west side of the building, we have a very expanded sidewalk area. Could get into some of the landscaping, but we could, we could easily light it, connect it. We're also working on a upgrade to all the electrical that we're going to be bringing to you all um in the near future. Uh, for the site to meet some code things, you know, now with our building department, we've identified some improvements that need to be made and some things that.
They're catching.
Have to be made and uh, so, but it'll be a huge benefit to to the events uh that are here, to the stage area, to the. Um, you know, actually having more electrical to to plug in instead of having as many of the loud uh generators and things like that. But also get uh some, some things that will help with from.
I'm lining it all on that.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's in motion, like it's going to happen soon, it'll be before all the. Yeah, true in motion and uh.
Oh, the hassles that we deal with on those festivals.
Yeah, yeah, so it's, it's going to be good um to get those improved. Uh, it's nice to have and a, you know, with the building department and a a master electrician, you know, that works for us to help work with the companies. So we're, we're, we're moving on that and.
Before you jump off, can you do me one big favor, before you guys make any real big final on what you want to do behind the stage? Can you please have my um main production guy consult with the, with them to tell them exactly what we need over there? Because we've taught, we've talked to, um, we came in and we talked to Mark about it, it was a few years ago. But it would be nice if we're actually moving forward with it to really have a person that sit, that does it. And knows exactly what we would need over there, just that one particular part. There's specific needs that we need, that would be really nice if they could have that conversation, not that he wouldn't know on his own. But this is kind of the problem that happened in Los Colonius when they built it, they didn't talk to those of us that put concerts on. And so that's why it's facing the sun and there's just little, the little things that people know. And and I know that my, my guy would really like to have that conversation if that's before they move forward with stuff.
Great, yeah. Um, and then, but the suggestion of the Prab uh for that location was, is actually a good, a really good thought. So we're looking into, we're looking into that, um, we, we had already, we had rolled out uh Kim's Auto Parking Lot. Um, and we had ruled out the two spaces in this parking lot, we were looking at park space. But trying to eliminate taking up space in the park as well, and so we have a lot of room in that area, so it could be helpful.
Yeah, it really comes down to that, we have a beautiful park outside this building and. Different places that may look good are great, but then there's trees and the great landscape that you want to take up. So hopefully we'll find a good solution with, on the west side, um, and then I think it's just fourteen to sixteen week lead time from now to to get the building. Or the bathroom. That's all I have, Mayor.
Is that it? All right, James?
Yeah, everything has to be catching. We had a tourism meeting finally, and of course I wasn't able to go, so sorry about that, Shannon. That, that was bothersome to me, but anyway, we finally got it back on track, I haven't got a chance to check in with Shannon to see. What that entailed, uh, as far as the winter concert, we've got our band booked. When Ciara has done a great job on putting together promotional material and getting that all out, so all that is, is um. In the works and everything's good and ready to go, um, my only concern is I'm, I thought, uh, speaking of power again. I've kind of noticed that Mulberry doesn't really seem, the plaza doesn't really seem to have any power outlets. And I might have to go take a little deeper dive, I didn't, I just have kind of glanced over. Do we have outlets over there in the corners and where are we thinking that we want to put the staging area and stuff like that? And again, I haven't went over then really walked around and really dug into it, but um just passing by, walking by and no, I was like, where are outlets? And I don't know that we did that, so is there any clarity on that?
All the power is uh just to the south of those planter boxes, so.
Oh, great.
And uh it's sitting in the ground, and then we tried to put in like the weatherproof like McMaster car like uh boxes. But we didn't know like where those events would take place, so there's conduit, um, you know, that can chase water throughout the space.
Okay, perfect, um, who should I talk to that so that we're prepared prior to the event? On maybe on where that layout looks like and stuff? Yeah, let's make a time, maybe we all get together and Matt, Mark or whatever, whoever, just so that we can kind of, we'll need to walk the grounds. Because we haven't done any events like that there, so we kind of need to look at it and see what makes the most sense.
Yeah, and we'll have, we'll have Jen join, probably Ciara and Matt out there with you.
Yeah, that'd be great, so Ciara, if you want to put that meeting together and just let me know when you guys want to do it.
And that's February twenty-third, right?
February twenty-third, and the, the response so far from the community has been massive. And we, the event page is like two hundred and fifty people interested, and so it's doing really well, so excited about all that. Um, I got an email from um Diana Garcia. She's the Assistant Director of Communications at Grand Junction, uh, West Acre, the Church of Jesus Christ Latter Day Saints. She asked if I would be available at some point this month to have lunch with President Harrison. Um, and it was just a casual lunch, just to meet and go over, um, if there's any needs, anything like that. And so if any of you have anything that you'd like me to talk to them about when we have that, I, I would love to bring that up. So um, other than that, that's me.
All right, anybody else have to go second again before I go, that normally happens. Um, I had police commission last month, so we just heard that update, so uh everything's going good there. Um, I had uh thinking about our boards and commissions, and then I wanted to get council's feedback on this. I don't know how many boards and commissions, when somebody gets done with a board and commission, I sign a letter, because we put it in consent, that I sign a letter saying thanks for your service. I talked to Mike today and I said, does that really do justice to, we've got a couple of people that are terming out on like Arts and Culture Board. That have put in a lot of effort and a lot of time, so I thought, just a piece of paper that says, hey, thanks for your services, that do justice. So I talked to Mike about that and I said, I want to get council's kind of approval to direct staff to say, hey, if we've got people that are term limiting out on some of our boards. That means they're giving six years of time, you know, can we do something that's more unique and different for them? So if everybody's good with that, then.
And were you thinking like a special effing gear?
I told Mike, I said, we have the big gears, I thought maybe if you did something out of a, you know, they did some tests with like clear acrylic, they've done some other things. But do maybe a, a smaller one that, because most of them have got the bigger gear, so is there a unique gear that we could use from year to year to year? That we'd have, you know, I could think they, they, they'd cut those over all metals, didn't they? Because they made an aluminum sample and they made a clear acrylic sample, so I figured we can just direct staff to come up with something unique.
That'd be awesome.
That'd be great, we have, we have one, Lou Brackets termed here in May on the park board.
I do like the, the unique word, I, I think that they should have something that's a little different maybe than, than all the other ones that go out.
All the boards, uh, like Joel just said, but like all, people were already gifted, like. Despite being, a big one just by being on the board, so.
I thought, I mean, we did, we don't really, I mean, we're saying, hey, we want community involved, and we want to get involved, you know, you have to give your services, like, hey, thanks, you know.
Okay, bye.
And do you want to uh showcase them here in as?
And that's what I would like, that's what I would like to do is during that council report, after we, when we have it addressed on there, that we could then. Physically give out the award to those people and invite them to that meeting, so I mean, it's not like it's going to happen every month, it's going to be something that. We do it when we do the.
One more board meeting, it's going to be enthusiastic.
Dedicated, you really are.
Everybody's good at that, I was just going to have Mike.
Midnight.
All right, with, with that, that is all I have, so the time is now nine oh seven PM.